Okay, so. This is the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. It is three minutes after seven o'clock on April 15th, 2020. We are gathering remotely because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we have two things we're going to do this evening. The first is a public hearing on the tentative budget. And a little later, we will have a truncated regular board meeting. Before we begin, I want to thank Bruce Frank of Tivoli and Danielle Maloney of Panda 23 TV, who both helped this ardent light figure out all this remote tech this week. So it could not have happened without them, and it truly does take a village. So I will begin to talk about the noticing process for this public hearing, because obviously, the public cannot come to Watts de Peister Hall. I'm going to read the notice that appeared in the paper of record on April 9th, that being the Freeman. "Pursuant to Section 5-508 of the Village Law of the State of New York, the tentative budget for the Village of Tivoli has been prepared and filed with the Village Clerk. A public hearing on the budget will be held on Wednesday, April 15, 2020, at 7:00 PM to consider the same before adoption. Due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, the Village Hall is closed to the general public until further notice. Pursuant to Executive Order Number 202.1 issued by Governor Cuomo on March 12, 2020, and advisories issued by federal, state, and local officials related to the COVID-19 virus, there will be no physical meeting, and the Board will hold the public hearing remotely. Board members are expected to participate in the meeting via teleconference or video conference. Board members are expected to participate, excuse me. A supplemental notice will be posted on the Village website prior to the meeting listing with the specific link, which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live. That was put up last night, and it's been there all day today. Pursuant to Executive Order 202.1, this meeting will be recorded and transcribed. Comments may be submitted in the following ways. Number one, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email in advance of the hearing to mayor@tivoli NY.org by 4:00 PM the day of the hearing. Please note budget hearing in the subject. Two, written comments may be dropped in the Village's Dropbox in advance of the hearing at Village Hall, 86 Broadway, Tivoli, New York, 12583, by 4:00 PM on the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing. Three, comments may be made by telephone to the mayor in advance of the hearing at 8457573371 by 4:00 PM prior to the hearing. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Interested persons may also comment by email or telephone to the above email and phone on April 15, 2020, from 7:00 PM up until the close of the hearing." So we are now in that period. "The tentative budget may be examined by viewing the Village's website. The tentative budget includes a maximum compensation for the mayor in the amount of $12,000 per annum. The deputy mayor, $3,500 per annum, and the trustees, $3,000 per annum. All reasonable accommodations will be made for people with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the Village Clerk in advance at clerk@tivoli NY.org or by phone 8457572021, so that arrangements can be made. Please note that the Village has limited hours at this time. Please contact Mayor Joel Griffith at mayor@tivoli NY.org or 8457573371 with any questions by order of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tivoli, Robin Bruno, Village Clerk." So what I just read there was the notice that appeared in the paper of record on April 9th. So those were the means by which people could comment on the tentative budget prior to this moment, and also how they can comment once we get into our public hearing. So right now, I would like a motion to open the public hearing on the 2020-2021 tentative budget. And I know we will be going back and forth with our mics here. And I'm going to do everything by roll call. So if someone would like to raise your hand, I'll recognize you for a motion. Okay, Trustee Schneider, do you move to open the public hearing?
I so moved.
Deputy Mayor, Major, two seconds.
Second.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open. And the deputy mayor is following the livestream on YouTube. And I'm here with my phone. I will hop over in a moment and check my email. I know there's a lag on the YouTube feed that the public is seeing. So we're just going to sit tight, hang out for a few minutes, and see if there are any comments coming into the Village Board. I have received one comment via email, but it's just that everyone looks great. And that's good to know, because this is our first virtual meeting. So I appreciate hearing that. And it's a great relief to me that this seems to be working. Do we have any comments so far in the YouTube chat? Oh, excellent. So in another minute, we are going to keep this hearing open, because we really want to do the best we can to allow the public to take advantage of this novel means of communicating with us. And we will get into our regular board meeting, which, as I said, will be brief. And we will, if any comments come in on the hearing, we will pivot back to that before we close the hearing and then vote yes. Emily?
Do you think he says, "You all look great"? I think we should give you raises. Semi-colon, close parentheses.
You want to try and turn on your mic and read the comment?
We have a comment from a constituent saying, "You are all great. I think we should give you raises." Semi-colon, close parentheses.
We can't afford that. But thank you. Unfortunately, we do expect that sales tax revenues, which is one of our revenue streams, is probably going to go down. I think there's no question that municipalities across the country are going to be hit very hard by the economic impacts that are starting and will be with us for some time. So that is a serious matter that we will have to contend with in the coming fiscal year. But thank you for the comment. It's very good to know that this is working. Just going to hop over and check my email again. Okay, so. Public, you are certainly welcome to email mayor@tivoli NY.org. You can call 8457573371. And if you are in the YouTube chat, you can chat away. And we will continue to gather and respond to your comments. But I would like to now move into the regular board meeting. So it's now 7:12 PM. And the April 2020 board meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees will come to order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I brought out the small desk flag. So let's begin with the pledge, please. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you very much. I have the agenda produced by myself and the clerk today. And. Public, you will find it's a bit shorter this month. You know, we're trying to space out our time in Village Hall as is appropriate. And obviously, we're doing this remote meeting. So some of your favorite features, hopefully, will return next month, even if we are virtual or in person. Our first agenda item is the Village Clerk's report. And I will turn the meeting over to Clerk Bruno, please.
Yes. So in the Clerk's office for the past month, there were 448 trash tags sold. Two payrolls were processed. And the deputy clerk has been working basically remotely in order just to ensure progress as appropriate for planning and zoning matters. That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Clerk Bruno.
You're welcome.
Trustees, you received today from the clerk, two sets of minutes. We had the March 18th public hearing minutes and the March 18th regular board meeting minutes. So please raise your hand. We are looking for a motion to approve the minutes. Deputy Mayor, you may have to unmike yourself or mic yourself.
I'm moving.
Is there a second? Trustee Schneider?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt both sets of minutes. Is there any discussion? And we will do a roll call vote. I'm going to work down the screen. We'll start with trustee Ezrodi. And if you would please unmike your mic as you go, so we can hear you. We have an "I" from trustee Ezrodi. Deputy Mayor?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote "I". Both sets of minutes are adopted. Next, we have the Treasurer's Report. I want to thank Treasurer Day, who has been working away, as she always does, despite current conditions. And she's been splitting her time in the office with the clerk. I appreciate their flexibility in allowing each of them to access the office at different times. That has involved working evenings. So thank you both. In the Treasurer's Report for this month, we spent, out of the A Fund, the General Fund, Excuse me, $237,665.3. And that is also our grand total, $237,665.3. Is there a motion to adopt the or accept the Treasurer's Report? Trustee Ezrodi?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it was seconded by trustee Schneider. Is there any discussion on the Treasurer's Report? I will just inform the public that it's bigger than normal, and that has to do with the large payments coming out of our insurance money towards the reconstruction of the firehouse. We've had some large payments to Belfour, who are moving right along on the firehouse reconstruction. With that, we will do a roll call vote to accept the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Ezrodi? Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote "Aye". The Treasurer's Report is accepted. Next, I would ask for a motion to pay the bills.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Schneider, seconded, I believe, by the deputy mayor. Okay. All in favor, we're going to do a roll call vote. Trustee Ezrodi? Deputy Mayor, Major?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
I also vote "Aye", and the bills will still be getting paid by the Village despite everything we're living through. So. How are we doing? Okay. Yes. We will now take the comment.
So is it a technical comment? We should move this. That Susan's microphone, will you turn on the volume? Susan's microphone is distorted. And if she's speaking a lot, it might not come through.
So we did get a comment in our livestream. It's about an unfortunate technical matter. It's not on the budget. But we appreciate the feedback, and we do hope to work out our technical kinks here. We are, you know, we do get some feedback and some distortion on the mics. So thank you very much for letting us know. Who did that comment come from? Alicia, okay. All right. So. Before we move on to actually voting on the budget, we'll give it a few more minutes for comment to come in. I will again note that we received no comment through the Dropbox, via mail, via email, via phone, between the posting of the notice and the posting of the tentative budget. And now. I'm going to move out of order a little bit to create as much time as possible for the public. I will let you all know that the next board meeting will be held somewhere, probably virtually again, on Wednesday, May 20th, at 7:00 PM. We may or may not have workshop tonight. We didn't really have workshop. And the Board will have some sort, I believe, regular workshop on May 13th. That will likely be in the same Zoom format, streaming to YouTube if possible. I would now like to offer the trustees a chance to speak about anything that you would like. Because I know we're not doing full trustee reports this week, but we can go around and do that. Emily, did you have something? And I can mute myself.
Sure. So just a couple of things about walking. And everybody's walking, and it's great that everybody's out. I would say just please be safe about all of this walking while staying six feet apart and avoiding getting hit by cars and all that. I have been spending more time visiting historic sites online lately. Like Montgomery Place, for example, is closed, but there is an amazing website. If you Google "American Arcadia and Montgomery Place", you will get to this amazing site that will tell you everything you want to know about. It's sort of set up in a format that picks four prominent women in the history of Montgomery Place and really explains their lives and contributions. So when the grounds open up again, when all this is done, you can go there with a whole different lens to see it all through. I recommend it. Claremont grounds are still open for walking, but they have a phenomenal blog that I think their archivist does. And it's Claremont State Historic Site Blog.Blogspot.com. And it's just wildly entertaining and super informative. So that too can inform your walks around that property. And other than that, you know, get out and enjoy some nature responsibly. And you're definitely sharing it with the tics now. So that's all I got.
Any other trustee comments? I want to let everyone know how remarkable the response from our community has been to these, well, to this unprecedented disruption. You know, a lot of the changes in our daily lives came incrementally, yet quickly. Sometimes, conditions in the morning, executive orders would be different in the afternoon or certainly the next day. But for the most part, we've had... Everybody's getting it and has been keeping each other safe, whether that's staying home if you have symptoms, whether that is socially distancing if you're out and about. We have had tremendous support from Dutchess County. I will say, as a New Yorker, I am very proud and pleased with the state response and the governor's response. It's comforting to see strong and clear and good leadership. You know, this is something Tivoli believes in home rule, but we are a very small place. And dealing with this pandemic, which extends around the globe, is certainly something for the larger governmental entities to take the lead on. So grateful for the state and county, the Dutchess County Supervisors and Mayors Association. We've been in regular contact, all of the municipalities, sharing information, sharing stories, helping each other understand the many executive orders that are coming down that we municipalities are responsible for enforcing. And so, you know, everyone in this village, I just want to say thank you for your patience and your understanding. And, you know, we are definitely not out of this yet. This is all going to keep going for a while. It's, you know, spring has come. It's wonderful to get to be outside. Our daffodils are in bloom all around the village. And so someone said to me the other day, "Imagine if this was happening in the middle of winter." So I guess there's always a brighter side. We did learn today that the governor is going to require face masks by every New Yorker in public. So pay attention to that. I believe that begins Friday. But I will post more about that executive order through the Village email blast list, which remains the number one mechanism by which we communicate with you. And if you have not signed up, you can do so at the Village website. I also want to talk about what the current rules are at Memorial Park, because I think it's been a little confusing for folks. My desire has been to not close the park. And so we're doing something a little nuanced, and that's where the possible confusion comes in. The open spaces of the park remain open. You can walk to the park, through the park, you can be in the park. But all the facilities, all the equipment, the basketball court, the playground, the skate ramp, any of the jungle gyms, the swings, all of that is closed and off limits. So I hope that we can continue to enjoy the open spaces we have in Tivoli. And if everyone can just stay off of the equipment, which seems to have been going better lately, then we can keep the park open, which is certainly, I think, as much as we can preserve any aspect of our previous normal lives that we can, we should. So those are my comments. And I've tried to run the clock in case we get any more comments. So Deputy Mayor, if you'd check the YouTube feed one more time. I will check my email one more time. Okay, the deputy mayor would like to talk again.
I just wanted to talk for a minute about the safety net that we have here, that we're really lucky to have. So throughout the village, on each street, we have, in each, you know, neighborhood, we have neighborhood captains who probably left cards on your doors just to be sort of a hyper-local point of contact for whatever you might need, whether it's information, whether you are just, you know, needing to talk, whether you need groceries delivered, all that kind of thing. Your neighborhood captain can hook you up, point you in the right direction, you know, pretty much no matter what it is. So if you didn't get a card and you would like to know who your neighborhood captain is, I would say just, I don't know, send me an email. Send Joel an email. And then the safety net sort of branches out from there, like that's your hyper-local. And then we have Red Hook Responds, and you've probably seen the signs up for that. And they've got close to 300 volunteers and a hotline. So if you need, you know, if you're too sick to cook, they can bring you meals. If you need groceries, if you need medicine, if you need, you know, mental health, they will point you in the right direction. And also, the Senior Services Committee in Red Hook has put together a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of stuff as well. So they have a hotline, which is 8457584624. So I just, I feel like I sleep better and wake up less anxious, knowing that we have all this, you know, all of these people who are caring about what happens. So thanks, everybody.
Yes, trustee Schneider?
I just wanted to take a moment to sort of expand on the deputy mayor's comments and just really acknowledge all of the folks who are not necessarily neighborhood captains, but are each contributing in whatever small ways they can to the overall larger efforts to make sure everybody in our community is cared for, whether that's immediately here in Tivoli or on a larger scale in Red Hook or even the neighboring communities. I've seen an amazing amount of collaboration and support and people coming together and pooling their talents and their abilities to really make a difference in how this pandemic is infecting our entire community. And it's making a huge difference. So thank you to each and every person who has stepped up in a way that is small or large to make sure that we're all cared for.
Very well said. Thank you, trustee Schneider. So.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes, Clerk Bruno?
Yes, okay, thank you. The deputy mayor had mentioned about the senior services in Red Hook and gave the number. The Red Hook Responds, she mentioned the helpline. I thought it might be nice to just provide that for people to jot it down if they're viewing right now. It's 8456404788.
Very good. Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Today and last night, we had taken down the sort of general COVID alert that we've had on our website since this all came upon us. That will go back up tomorrow now that we are getting through this board meeting. And it's got information about Red Hook Responds. It's got links to all the county and state health departments and lots of good information there. I'm sure most people have had a lot of information from many sources in recent weeks. But I just wanted to remind folks that you can go to the Village website to get started learning about what's in place around you and information about the pandemic. So. So I believe, trustees, we are probably ready to close the public hearing on the 2020-2021 tentative budget. We have received no comments on the budget. We did have a couple of comments on our streaming attempt, which in a few more moments, I will not have to call an attempt, but still feeling humble about it. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion has been made by trustee Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna have the second from trustee Ezraudi, who has been courageously suffering through her sound problems. So, thank you, Susan. Okay, now a roll call vote on closing the hearing. Trustee Ezraudi? Deputy Mayor, Major? Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. We have closed the public hearing on the tentative budget. Now we will move towards adopting the budget. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget as the final budget for the coming fiscal year? Motion was made by trustee and seconded by deputy mayor, Major. Is there any discussion on the adoption of this budget? I want to let people know that we are staying under the tax cap. This is going to have a tax increase of 1.78%. That works out to approximately $20 per household. That will generate for the village $10,700 more. The biggest drivers in this budget have to do with the budgetary ramifications of transferring the water and sewer systems to the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. This gets a little nerdy, but we used to have three funds where we could spread costs, and two of those funds are water and sewer, and those are now going to be going off to be managed by the water authority. All the money in there still belongs to the users of the water and sewer systems, but it's gonna be managed by them, not us. Which leaves the Village of Tivoli with a single fund, a general fund. And so there were still a few liabilities that were off in the F and G that we had to move into the A. We've been doing that for a couple of years. This was the last and final year when we really had to move it over there. And I think we've managed to do it. Again, we will see just what kind of revenue shortfalls come our way in the coming year. But we do have a decent fund balance that hopefully will allow us to weather whatever financial difficulties come our way. So with that, any other comments from the board before we move on to a vote? Okay, we will do a roll call vote to adopt the 2020-2021 tentative budget as the final budget. Trustee Ezraudi? Deputy Mayor, Major? Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And the budget has been adopted on time, which was not super easy, given everything that's been going on. They moved, you know, state primaries, but they didn't move the deadline for little villages to complete their budget. So I'm grateful to the board and the clerk and treasurer that we were able to do this. And so we will be back in some form soon with another possibly virtual board meeting. Counsel, is there anything you need to add to tonight's meeting?
No, I think that's it. Just noting that you're planning on doing the same thing at the next meeting, so people will wanna watch the website for the information to watch that.
Certainly. Thank you, counsel. Okay, with that, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's virtual meeting? Deputy Mayor is moving. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'm not gonna do a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.